This meeting is being recorded.
What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session and today we're gonna be looking at three bet pots from the small blind. What do we do here?
F pop.
I would go small, ace of spades and a jack.
Four point A.
Ken is right.
All in, all in.
All in, all the cookies or big, mostly big. Big or very big or all the.
He's just gonna have a ton of like pair plus draw stuff here. Uh yeah, this is, this is risky business, man. I almost feel like he called us.
You got the ace of spades, you can't fold the ace of spades.
Now you gotta call, I think.
You could fold if you had ace jack with the jack.
Look at the EV three point eight eight, like it's honestly, it's not even close. Small, four point eight. Check. Um. You might blast here, you might just put all the cookies in, you might just go all in, but I like check or all in.
What about fourteen?
Small.
Uh, I'm not a fan of fourteen to be honest, man.
We got off button, we saved the rest for when it doesn't work.
No, you have. You can't fold, you can't. Dude, you can't fold, like if you bet fourteen any jams, you gotta call.
Yeah, but if we bet fourteen, he calls, we break the river, we still can survive.
Are you gonna, are you gonna, not gonna bluff?
Yeah, of course, I'm not gonna bluff with this queen.
Forty five percent, we still got queens, kings, aces, we got to, we wanna set our draw.
So tell you what, guys, okay, we check raise, he calls, we didn't turn this baby, should check.
Yeah, I check or jam here.
No, it's never a check.
I said best one three times.
So Ken was right, look at that seven point two.
Can't tell. Gonna learn your can't tell, now what can't you?
Uh showdown value, I guess, I mean, I, it's probably gonna blow up, but I.
That is the best card for three bet.
I know, I, I don't wanna lose all my chips.
Huh?
I'm bad here, can I say, I'm checking.
And you can't play like a robot to the river and then say you're scared, what are we gonna do, boys?
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's good, it's good.
This is. Are we value betting to get called by ace ten?
Oh, I don't know what it's doing, man.
We're just, we're just setting it up so we don't get blocked by his spade combos, now we can fold any of spades.
Nope, you just call it off and you lose three chips on average.
I would be so tilted if he jams second pair on me like this and I call with this, I would be so annoyed.
So a block bets, cuz it's never gonna fold the river and it's once, doesn't want him to do this with a jack.
The, the real question, gallons, if you catch yourself doing that, do you re-bought?
Um, depends on the buy-in, but probably.
Okay.
Yeah, Ashwin, G2 was just a super fish.
But small.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, this is a small bet ace high, I think, yeah, we're just gonna get a small. Alright, man, this is a good double barrel, dude.
This is the one, let's go.
Oh, my God. We were all like.
Louis, what's our turn strategy? Um, can we see range?
I bet.
I think maybe, maybe king high flushes, but.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was gonna say, this is like the best unpaired hand, I think this is like an edge case for some reason.
Yeah, cuz we are gonna bluff a bunch of diamonds for this turn, right?
So like, look at the other ones, like, look at King ten, for instance, is King ten going with it?
Yep.
My screen froze. There it goes, right, so.
He did.
And if you have, yeah, the suited one, like you wanna look at the flush draw specifically.
Diamonds.
Was King ten suited, is that diamonds or is it uh something else? It's a little bit, mostly clubs.
Honestly, it's everything.
Jeez. But diamonds in there fifty percent, yeah.
Uh, we all break this one.
See, again, like you said, this one probably dominates other king and queen Xs that are actually still in there, like he's got some king jack, right?
Right, so that's kinda what I'm thinking is like, honestly, it's, I think the, the cards are the overriding component here in this three bet pot, the fact you have a king and a queen. Um, like, what do I, I mean, do we just jam?
Oh, I don't think so.
Or do we bet small? I think betting smells bad, man, cuz it went check, check, turn.
Yeah, I kinda wanna, I kinda wanna jam.
I like jamming.
Oh, jams.
It's like something that's a little thinner, like five X is a little thinner and maybe could go a little smaller, but.
Being called by as we, I mean, he's gonna have weak ace X sometimes that we just get called by and maybe worse.
Yeah.
Um, being the best ace here on a really dry board, maybe we go half pot, but I think small bets.
I think.
Gonna be reasonable.
Yeah, it's just really dry.
Yeah.
I'm learning.
Our range benefits from the small bets there, right?
Yeah, yeah, for sure, that's definitely a small, I think it's just the fact that we have ace king, we beat all the other aces. Oh, boy, oh, boy, um. Yeah, I like that, I was honestly, I was flirting with the idea of just jamming it in here.
Nah, 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 was Jack then bored, yeah, sure.
Yeah, that's fair. Alright, we play check maybe or small bet.
That's a bad turn.
What a terrible turn.
Yeah, stop it.
It's going in.
Why, why? Why, why are you getting everyone to fold who does?
You're isolating yourself versus hands that just beat you.
Looking for the queen, does he have it?
Yeah, but. Four.
Four ten.
Before and I call it all in.
Oh.
Oh, and.
Now it goes all in.
Yeah. Why did you do it on the current?
I guess, I guess ranges.
Can't beat you.
Yeah, ranges got weaker after he checked.
Right, so after it goes check, check, turn, he's gonna have bluff catches at that point, so I think your range just greatly wants to jam or check there.
He has like two pairs a lot.
Top of.
Check. And you may jam here, this may be another one, this may be another jammer with large bets.
Ace queen, ace jack, I'd bet big, this one I'm gonna check.
Dude, it's just like, these middling.
Seven connects to the nine ten, it has locked up equity, so you're just jamming into the straights here too often, if it's uh ten, nine, five, it's gonna be a jam.
Yeah, I kind of agree with you, Peter, I, I like that analysis, I'm kinda cheating though, cuz mentally, we, I think the hand before had locked up equity and it still jams some with a similar hand, but I don't know, I, I, I agree with your analysis, that's how I think about it.
So I would go out, is it, is this not a good strategy?
I think maybe you wanna go.
I think half is pretty reasonable.
Um, yeah, maybe, maybe, so it is jamming, here it is.
But not the primer, great choice.
But I agree with you, Peter, like that's how I think about those spots, the fact that it has locked up equity.
With the ace, queen, ace jack, though.
Dude, he's just gonna have so many calls here, I think, he's gonna have so many pair plus flush draw type hands and straight draws.
You were right, but not with the spade in our hand.
What is locked up equity?
So like higher hand classes, um.
Then is locked up.
Got it. So like, when I say locked up, he's gonna have full frequency of like jack eights here, some, at some frequency, right?
So. Oh, hands that he'll never fold.
Right.
Okay.
The, the potential's been realized, like if it was a, a six, there would be a lot of equity potential, like he's got infinite draws here that he should be seeing a flop with.
Wow, well, tell you what, this is gonna be a lot easier to play for me now, cuz usually, I see that small, these stuff, I call, and then it's just a disaster for everybody, whereas now, if I just open jam in his face, it looks.
What's he gonna do? He's gonna call off with a pair plus flush draw or a pair plus straight draw.
They're gonna call, but at least, I mean, I'm not the one doing the calling.
Um, this is gonna be a check or very small.
Just small.
Small's fine, yeah, I mean, it's obvious. Um, I like going pretty polar here, I like, I don't hate fourteen, um, I kinda just wanna jam some, nope, it just wants to check.
I thought fourteen was good, too.
Yeah, it's never using.
The SPR in this setup, if we were just a little bit deeper, it would be good.
It's never going all in, never going really big, so it's always gonna be like, oh my God, did I miss it? One big one.
It's gotta be checking.
In these, um, these super shallow spots, like you just treat sets as the nuts, you treat it as like, as like impervious to the flush draws and you just don't worry about it.
Right.
Right, so I, I think like there's something interesting here, where like, if you check to him on the turn, his flush draws and like middling stuff like pair plus flush draw, they're just gonna jam into you because of the SPR and we can call where now like you gave him a small bet, he breaks his flush draws, we don't get value from anything other than ace X.
Uh, but again, like he shouldn't do so for our, that, that small size we use on the turn should be really mergey, we should have some of our own draws, some weak one pair hands, so like, he definitely raises that sizing some.
It would be interesting to see, I don't think like his hands with his high equity holdings that don't have like a lot of showdown are gonna really like pump the volume up there in a three bet pot. I think they're just gonna realize, like, okay, if he has like ace six of spades, do you think he's gonna raise us on the turn?
Marginal made hand.
I don't know, I mean, against, it's, it's kinda not marginal against that sizing, it's kinda good, but yeah, I mean, maybe not, but he definitely should have a raising range.
Right, maybe king, uh, king, queen off, key, queen ten of hearts or something, is he raising that? Whereas like.
Yeah.
But then I think there's other, um, there's other, you know, lines for the value, like keep him in with the seven X and five X, if they pick up trips or two pair, they dominated and, and drawing dead effectively, so like, we would love him, his seven X to find the trips on the river.
Sure, I, I don't disagree with it, and that, that's, uh, that's also like an argument for playing check on the turn, where it's like, if he's got jacked hearts or jacked ten of spades here, he's gonna probably push his equity on the turn with a hand that's strong. Whereas like he just has to fold it on the deuce of clubs.
Yeah, but then of course, from out of position, a, um, you know, a tiny bet is basically the same as a check anyway, cuz he always is allowed to bet after we bet, so like, we didn't control the action.
Yeah, by the way, I'm, I'm playing, I don't wanna say devil's advocate, because I don't play check on the turn with this combo really here, I'm just trying to understand the logic behind it. Because, I mean, it's the primary frequency, checking this turn is you know, what you're supposed to be doing eighty percent of the time or something, right? Which is odd to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, well, you unblock all the flushes, you unblock all his bluffs.
Yeah, which I would use is like.
On this note, what do we do?
Well, I think you just jam it now after you led small turn and, I mean.
I wanna stuff it, you could also make the case for twelve, targeting some really weak parts.
Honestly, I'm just targeting ace X at this point, like I'm jamming and hoping it ace calls.
Well, he's gonna.
You could even, you could even make the case for three point five to induce, if any hand is gonna induce, like something's gotta be protecting that, and like, you can make a case for this hand.
It's, it's check time, he's, he, you, you have to let him bluff the spades and the hearts here and value better than ace.
Maybe, maybe it is, I, I still think I jam.
Do you bet if you have, uh, the queen of heart, Pete, or the queen of spade?
No, it's, you still allow, well, you don't have the queen of spades, but when you have the queen of hearts, you, you block a tiny bit of value, but like you still unblock all his spade bluffs and all, all the other thing, like this is a, this is a check spot.
It is, but I don't understand it well.
Oh, it is a check spot, look at that.
Yeah.
And then look at how the EV falls, like betting small, tiny, three point five, okay, betting twelve, not great, betting big, bad.
It's all in or check on the server.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's how I would play this node, I mean, you're in a really polar node when you bet small turn like that.
Are you guys going in with your low kings?
Uh, I mean, I don't know, man, probably not.
So the, the king's three and the king four, they block the straight here, so yeah, they're going.
The problem is, it's a three bet pot, we just don't have that stuff in range.
You should.
Do you not three bet the king's head sometimes?
No, 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 uh, well, I mean, from forty big blinds out of position, I think you do, but what I'm saying is the straight, you don't three bet like the three fours.
Hmm, yeah, right. Right, so we can block him having the nuts, we can't represent us having the nuts.
Right.
When he doesn't call it off anyway, does he have four three suited?
I think this is probably, I mean, maybe low frequency, I don't think four three is performed very well, I think he's got like five, six.
Right, exactly, five, four, okay.
Yeah. I, um, I think these two high cards are gonna lend itself, or I'm sorry, it's not two high cards, this is the previous hand.
Now I'm just looking at the general strategy, so I have an idea to Broadway with king queen, it's not so good, okay.
Yeah, so it's a three bet pot and we looked at this with the big line the other day, Louis, whenever it's a three bet pot and there's two Broadway cards that are particularly not an ace, you have a much more polar strategy, you check a lot more.
Yeah.
And you have, uh, some bigger bets.
Uh, well, it doesn't check at all here. For all, every sideboard has no checking.
But the, the other broadways, the king has the checks, the queen has the jacks and the jacks have the checks, when there's two of the, or two of the broadways there.
So if we look at the general strategy, A side dry, you just range that small most of the time, unless you have a good value, and then the higher the second card gets, the more we get to polarize, and then when you're an ace side with another Broadway, you're just a bit big almost every time. Most of the time, and then when it starts to be too locked up, like ace, king, queen, stuff like that, you just go back to small.
Yeah, that makes sense.
The, the, the dry king eye board, for the most part, it just range that small. And then, when, like the tricky part seems to be here, right? It's like from King ten, when, from King ten to King queen.
Yeah.
Where you check on the whole truth.
Yeah, I think it's like our three betting range is just really starting to merge with the top of his calling range, so, you know, I don't know if we just go too crazy here. Yeah, I don't know.
And then the queen eye boards are very similar. King eye board, queen eye board, jack eye board are the same as well.
Yeah, queens, jacks and tens, we all have that polar jam strategy when there's two cards that are connected in there between, you know, kind of nine and king.
Is this a feature of shallow stacks? Normally, we're not aggressive on A side boards, are we? In three bet pots, generally, we are solid. You're gonna, you're gonna have a very high frequency bet strategy on, in a three bet pot on an A side board, just because our three betting range is so comprised of ace X, right?
So the way I understood this graph, this could be a check.
Um, yeah, I would have bet large here just because of the two high cards.
Queen eye board with the jack.
Yeah, queen, jack, six.
We're, we're at thirty bigs, is that right?
Forty. Forty.
Forty, okay.
Okay, so.
Right, um, it's just sitting like a larger sloth of the range is going into check, it doesn't necessarily mean like the ace highs or not. So, I mean, what do we, what are we checking there is a better question. Like, are you checking anything that picked up equity here? Are you betting it? It's, it's a lot of ace X to be honest, like, if you look, a lot of this all suit ace X is where the checking's coming from.
On their bear.
You, you are protecting, so jacks, queens, your sets are checking some of the time, that protects the range under pairs.
So ace six without a spade is where you find the checks.
Yes, there you go. I think that's pretty easy to construct, so you protect it with sets. Under pairs, ace X, no interaction, uh, we probably, we probably play check here, yeah.
Yeah. He took one big stab and he called, and we're done, it's time to go home.
I agree.
Uh, we folds, but did it ever bet this river?
It did, five percent, five percent frequency.
Alright, so not really, um, ace high, dry, I like a small bet here, I know we got king, king, if there's a hand to check, I'm not going big here.
Small, small, small.
Micro.
That's an ace side dry board, that's right.
I like playing check now, I think, if we add the king of hearts, I might find another small barrel, nothing too polar, but I think we play check now.
Yeah.
Probably check hope.
Okay, I kinda wanna go value now, like I would not be surprised to see some like ten or seventeen here.
I agree. Yeah.
He still has a lot of few, very few aces left in the deck. Yeah, there's a lot of aces in his check range, though.
He does have some weak ace X here, you're right, Peter, um, I, I think I'm confident enough that his range is gonna respond with a lot of combos we still are gonna be.
Is it all, is it also purely a function that since we're never gonna fold to a bet, we just bet ourselves to get value from worst that won't bet?
I think it's just a pure value bet, man, like, um, I feel like when the ace pairs there, we, we beat everything that's not an ace, literally the entire deck that's not an ace. That's in his range.
And I think of it this way, uh, when that ace pairs, it promotes actually all lower hands, because there's, we just found out that there's less ace X in his range than we thought there was, um, specifically, there's only two thirds as much.
Um, so why would you support a larger bet here as opposed to just like a typical small bet? I would still go small here, is it a function that you have better than an eight, maybe?
No, it's more like, uh, I would do it with every ace.
It connects well with the buttons calling range, the eight, seven, and of course, the ace as well.
No, it's really, it's better than the. I got that right.
So having interaction, well, what, what's the function here? Cuz it's.
Very large.
It's, it seems to be value driven, like the bigger, the better your top pair is, the more.
Oh, wait, this is, this is the, uh, turn note, Louis, you gotta go back one street, my man, let's go there. So it does seem to be splitting hairs with better than the eight is where you start seeing that frequency tick up.
Yeah. So no checking ranger.
Yeah, uh, it's just range bet, man, like you got ace high, rainbow, just.
Any two.
Any two.
Oops.
Deck.
Do you check?
I don't know, I'm checking.
I would bet, he, he shouldn't have a ton of nine X here, like, I, I, I I mean, I'm sorry, a ton of seven X, I said nine X, I meant seven X, so I would bet.
It's the worst eight we did size up with as well, or the worst ace that we sized up with as well, so.
And where.
Or aces, he's gonna have some sevens.
So he will have some better aces, I think the seven actually supports us though, cuz we're gonna be more frequent to chop with those now, we're unblocking the spade also, which is unblocking some of his continues.
That's nice.
I kinda, uh, I don't think jamming's crazy.
I'm checking and then I'm not folding, that's what I would do.
Yeah, I'm checking.
I don't hate that strategy either.
Ever checks, all in, wow.
That's gonna be savage.
After, you know what?
He is, uh, is out.
Yeah, it's the SPR, man.
Right, yeah, it is SPR, cuz it's a function of forty big blinds, you're just not folding top pair, like, okay, whatever, you're losing this regardless, you'd rather generate fold equity.
Alright.
Uh, pretty interesting spot, I like a small bet here, I think, maybe, maybe it goes larger sometimes, like this hand specifically.
Why do you want, on the previous hand, why do you wanna generate fold equity when you have the ace? You're not getting better.
What I'm saying is like, um, yeah, I guess you don't really wanna generate fold equity there, I'm trying to think like a targeting better ace, I'm talking, was I talking about that hand or this hand? Cuz this seems like what I'm talking about generating.
Talking about the ace hand.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna generate fold equity with ace hand.
Okay, good.
Yeah, he, he just has, it's, it's a half property show, he still has to call with pocket queens and.
I might have missed.
No. Yes, yes, yes.
Might have, I gotta get this aggression in my game.
I don't understand that, why that wasn't a marginally made hand.
It, it's. You wanna, you wanna shut it down on the, so what do you wanna do? You wanna shut it down when we hit the pair of tens here?
I do. Check call.
So.
Yeah, I just, I think it's for shallow SPRs, exactly, I was gonna say the exact same thing.
I agree, I agree a hundred percent, Tim, like if you look at this hand at a hundred big blinds, you probably do like put the brakes on.
Okay.
But at forty, it's like, I don't know, man, there's thirty big blinds in the center here, what do you care? Like, we're not folding.
No, he just like has pocket nines and he has some like ace, jack, and he has pocket sevens apparently.
So I think in three bet pots, when we turn equity, we are very inclined to try and represent, uh, cuz we have all the big over pairs and all the big sets, when we turn equity, we're inclined to, to bluff and because of the, the stack to pot ratio, our value goes pot, or our value goes all in, so our bluffs go all in here, too.
This is such, but this is not a, but this isn't the bluff.
No, but I think there's enough value to be had still.
Yeah, that's what. You guys are calling that value.
No, yeah, I, I, yeah, I think this is value.
This, this, this is a bluff. This is a.
I, I'm not calling this a bluff, I think it's just marginal made value.
Wait, it's just, yeah, show, it's equity, yeah, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's bluff.
Bluffs don't win when they get called, it's not a bluff.
See, now, in real life, I hate to go back to this, but in real life, we're relying on worse pairs to stack off, out of ten.
Well, it's not just worse pairs kid, he's gonna have draws, man.
So, let's take a look at his response and see how many better hands he folds and determine if it's a bluff.
Or see how many worse hands he calls with, like he, he calls the pocket sevens here and that makes you think that it's value, right?
Well, so like, how do you define a better hand here? Like, would you consider like ace, jack of spades a better hand?
No, that's a bit behind us cuz it only has like thirty percent equity against us.
He shouldn't have really ace, king here, but if he had ace, king here, would that be a better hand?
No, that would be.
Ten, eight, two pair, ten, nine, we're beating, we're beating eight, sevens, or we're beating sevens and sixes at least, I mean, like six, fives gotta call, there's a lot of draws that are calling, as you said as well.
Yeah, but I think it's a I think it's just a heavy function of like an out of position, three bet pot at forty big blinds.
Okay.
Like, the stack off threshold just goes through the floor, like you, you have to find stack offs, if you're playing three bet pots, otherwise you're torching money.
Yeah, all those eights are calling.
Yep, falling with worse than every eight.
It's value.
Some sixes sometimes, so that's where the value goes from. It's a value hand. We have the nuts.
Those were. And I guess the solver is, is doing a little bit of, you know, thinking in the background of, is it better to just shove and get him to call you off, or is it better to check and risk getting blocked off? It apparently likes to just do the betting yourself.
And that hand actually does have outs still if it gets called as well.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Um, I like a smaller bet here, I think.
I think these are always big bet plops, these three broadways.
It's kinda bad not having the best flush too, too, it's pretty bad.
So this, we need to polarize. When we polarize, uh, is this a hand we wanna polarize with? I don't think so, I think this is no spades, with the spade, we can, without the spade, we check.
We block both ends of the.
Go once and then give up.
Yeah. Yeah, we block both ends of this straight, so it's a, it's a bet.
And it was, uh, what size do we bet half pot or?
I went smallest time.
This one.
Yeah, man, um, I would. Again, I think it's just, this is a deviation for forty big blinds here, like if you're a hundred big blinds deep, I, I, I like a bigger bet here, I do. Really smaller check, I think we just check, man, this, you're not getting much done here. Do we bluff?
No, no, we have a.
I'm checking.
Pocket eight speed.
Yeah.
It's silly, it's silly, just check it, right? Just check it.
We have the wins to showdown sometimes.
Uh, I like a, I like a small bet, I, I'd go for. I like a small bet, I, I'd go four eight here.
Yeah. Yep, quarter pot.
Oh, right, out of position, you can actually go a tiny bit larger, that's right.
Okay, so let's play, I kinda wanna play checker jam here, I kinda like playing check, I think, though.
Ace high showdown, check.
It sucks, it sucks.
No, it actually keeps going small, like, look at that, I, I don't find that too often. I play a lot of check here.
Pocket nine would raise, pocket eight would raise, pocket seven would raise. But with the ace six, we're like in the middle. Like he doesn't really have a king, a queen, maybe has a queen. But we're like in the middle of the, we have better aces.
For some reason, it likes to lower EV line better to bet.
Oh, double paired board, man, you got a bluff catch.
He can't get those chips invested off LP, snap jam.
You do call.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, it's worth forty bigs when you call.
Happy days.
Oh.
Wow.
Is he actually bluffing aces there in game, though?
No, I don't think so.
Question.
I don't think he folds when we jam either.
He's value betting aces there, cause we still.
Honestly, you're probably right, I, I don't hate that, I think that's a good answer. I would bet four eight here, I think. Do we check here, though? Is, that's my question, is this a check note ever? I'm four eight here.
I bet small, I like to.
There's no checking range on these kind of textures.
Yeah, okay, good, cause I, I always bet small here.
Yeah.
Good.
I mean, we interact with that kinda, but we don't have a spade, I think we check.
We're the aggressor in a three bet pot, this is a give up.
And maybe get, we get not folded.
Yeah, I like a folds. Uh, do we size up here?
Oh wait, there's no six, yeah, I mean.
Feels kinda bad, man, right? Like, I kinda like small here also, but I could see merit.
Look at this here.
It's good for his range.
We don't have a checking ranger.
Oh, I mean, I'm not checking this, ever, I'm just, I'm torn between a small and a large bet.
I'm betting large, just cause I know this is a good board for them.
Betting large, because how would you play pocket tens?
I think si, it sizes on like ten nine. Sizes up.
So like jack nine would bet bigger, I bet.
Size up because of the locked up equity elements, right? There's already.
Oh, I mean, they're. Yeah, you see some crazy stuff with like, as it gets close to jack ten, two tone boards. Like, you see some really ridiculous sizings and things, it gets pretty wild.
The way I think about that one is, if you're betting large, you're polarizing, which means it should be your best hands in draw, and this isn't a draw.
Alright, Andy, have a nice day, man.
Yeah.
And so, since you three bet, you have a very high C bet, you know, continuation percentage. And so this has just got, and that just forces it to be a small bet.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I don't hate that.
I'd like to see how we play jack nine on that, where I, I think jack nine's gonna size up, but jack ten is where it starts going small.
I mean, jack nine at least is, is technically a draw, I mean.
Right, right, that's why I'm thinking that.
You could make jack nine, you could make.
No jack nines, guys.
You're crazy.
Crazy indeed.
I was talking about the board texture, by the way.
What do we do with this thing now?
I don't know, man, like, the jig is up, just check.
No, 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 the jig is not up, it's far from being up, it could still roll off a spade here.
He could have easily called two overcards.
Do you have a worse combo in your range?
Um, do we bet small again, or do we bluff small here?
Yeah.
Seven.
No.
I, I, I've seen, man. I don't know what to do here, and I would check here a hundred percent in game, but then I have Louis in the back of my head saying. This is the worst hand in your entire range, and next thing I'm all in and rebuying.
I mean, we gotta give up now, right? Oh my god, I mean, at some point, you just gotta raise their white flag.
Why am I trying?
How mad is he? How mad is he?
Tell you what, I tried to bluff because I know he has pocket king, my subconscious knows it.
It's Adrian Mateo, you gotta bluff, put all the chips in.
Three bet. He's a maniac with the Vip of Naya.
Thank you, guys.
Alright, range bet small.
Maybe I don't understand what Vip means.
Oh, I wanna tell you guys, next Friday, we're gonna analyze my database.
Oh shit.
Alright, so get ready, get, get the grills fired up, it's roasting Friday. I wanna go all in, but it's gonna be small.
Yeah.
Let him, let him raise.
I go all in. Now you're going, now you're going. You gotta do your own betting.
Yeah.
Just the turn nuts. Yeah, Vivian, he's super using for sure.
I think we're gonna run cold today, I don't know if I'm gonna register games.
Don't register anything, man, you're drawing dead.
Oh, man, bet small, I'm not that big.
Why are you not that big? Look at this wonderful board, you think he has any, any of it?
Yup, seven, eight, he's got seven, eight full frequency, pocket sixes, maybe?
He's calling your, your three bets with king six suited?
Dude, it is small blind versus button, absolutely he is.
Yeah, I'm calling, I'm calling three bets with.
Wow. Oh my.
Dude, these, these maniacs, man, the, these maniacs, they got five, four in their range, they got all kinds of crazy stuff.
What is this?
Also, he has all the sets and we don't.
Thirteen big blinds you're torching by folding this hand.
That's what I understand, I don't get to fold, it, it's easier to find the C bets.
I said king six, I said it exactly, is it? This game is rigged.
Yeah, well, that, that's the, that's the heuristic, right, Ken? If you're playing three bet pots out of position, forty big blinds, you just don't fold.
Bet large.
It's rebuy.
I, I honestly, uh, so ten nine two tone, I think we can bet large, I would not be surprised to see maybe even jams.
Jack and a queen.
Well, no, no.
Queen with that small.
Large.
No. Stuff it, stuff it, stuff it, stuff it.
Well, that's bigger, there you go.
It's everything. Except for.
I was about to say, Scotty, everything but small.
Small and medium.
It's the same heuristic, okay, so like, when it converges around jack ten, two tone boards, like with a blank. This is where you see like the shenanigans start coming into play. I like a small bet here.
Yeah.
Ace, ace high board, bet.
Even smaller.
And check.
Uh, yeah, we're checking, that's not very good for us.
Yep, gotta check.
Check hope. Maybe he'll check behind, no.
See, I'm out. All in nineteen percent.
Hall seventy-five percent.
Yeah, I know, but still, it's once, it's still rip, it's just crazy.
That's crazy. Like, I'll be, it's like, yeah. Dry, we can bet small.
Yep, that's small.
I like small.
Me too.
Not super small, yeah, right there.
No, it actually goes bigger.
Better bets for value, one of our best kings.
Alright, so we're all in then.
Nope.
Stuff it.
Oh my goodness.
There you go. Happy Thanksgiving, here's my turkey.
I think it would be a good exercise to really, maybe spend a day playing the, the check nodes. That we just kind of always, um. Omit from the strategy.
Yeah.
That's about fifty percent.
I like betting big here, I think.
Definitely, it's a big bet, we size up for value with our best kings.
Yup.
Yeah, we wanna reduce the stack to pot ratio.
And when you don't have the flush card, you're interested in getting more money and faster.
Yes, 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 smart logic.
That's small.
Make it.
I like a small bet.
Nine big blinds here, one fold equity.
Yeah, I think I'm still going for eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this hand is trash, this hand is.
It is trash, it's trash.
No spade, we size down.
I could find some bigger bets with more sort of.
With this. Up and barrel.
I could, I could support a larger bet with a spade, I definitely could do that.
The ace of spades.
Oh, that's no bueno, you played check.
It's gonna bluff some, but I'm checking. We saw where it still likes to do the small barrel when it board pairs a low board there.
King four off, that's a pretty light float.
Um, I wouldn't be surprised to see some larger betting on this texture, but I think this hand wants to go small. Um, check, I would play check here. You gotta call if he jams.
Second pair.
Uh, I don't think we get a fold, you go all in.
Yeah. You have second pair and block the spade, so stuff the turkey.
I would feel like. My god, we just, we're just hunting constantly against better hands.
I was looking at my numbers for this pot, and I was like, something's not adding up, maybe I'm doing something wrong, and now it's just like, yeah. It's not going well, right?
Small, man, what are you doing?
One big line.
Uh, I would continue small, I think.
Yeah, five.
I like five, no, even smaller, checks or it goes really small.
Oh, I guess the, the marginal made hand is better than the. Oh, sick.
Black and gold.
Yeah, I mean, if you're blocking that strong of a hand, you definitely have to call if he goes big.
Nine, six.
Size. Alright, I want.
I like a, I like a big bet here.
Hang on, I want somebody who doesn't speak often to speak.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Wanna go for it, and why?
You're gonna have to call somebody out.
About Saul.
Yeah, I know, I know Saul is lurking in the shadows.
Anyone?
Al's new.
Oh, they're gonna, they're gonna put you on the spot, Al.
Alright, let's do it.
There we go.
What size you wanna go for?
For here, I would go, um. Four point eight, and.
Why do you wanna go small?
Um, to allow.
Think about your range, do you have a better ace than that?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Think about your range when you three bet here, do you have a better ace?
Do I have a better eight, ace?
Ace, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, so to, so to guide you just a smidge, okay? What do you wanna do at the top of your range, when you get the best hands possible? Like, what, what's your goal?
Well, actually, from here, I, I would check then, if that's.
Well, no, 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 so like, okay, let's just think about it like from a range perspective. You wanna maximize, why do we balance our range? We balance our range because. You need weak hands to help you get equity from your best hands, so you don't show up like old man coffee and just never get paid with your aces.
Yeah.
So, the goal, the goal is to.
Yeah, one of our best aces, right? This is top pair, top kicker, we wanna size up for value. If you're betting small here, you're leaving money on the table.
Right, so you wanna, you want to maximize value with the top part of your range.
Yeah.
You bet big.
Yeah.
And you bet big because he's gonna have ace jack, he's gonna have ace ten, he's gonna have ace queen that you're just gonna get paid by.
And draws, he's got draws here that gotta call.
Yep, and draws.
Alright, wanna do another one, Al?
Yeah, sure.
Before we move off that one, though, uh, one thing, on, when Galen said the reason you wanna bet big there is. Because you wanna be betting your, your junk big, so you get called when you have your big hands. I think it's the opposite, but it's still true, I think it's, you bet your big hands so that, so that your bluffs work.
Right, I mean, it's a difference of perspective, right? I mean.
I totally agree with it.
I mean, it's really, we bet bigger for value, it's like agreed then. We're just greedy with our best hands.
So you don't think if, if I bet that, that small, that he would try to bluff it?
Nope.
So generally, the heuristic in position, in a three bet pot. You can almost, you don't wanna say always, but if you're in a three bet pot in position, a, a GTO. Solver's not gonna have a really robust raising range, especially at this short of a stack. Just not gonna be doing too much of that.
Okay.
Like, think about how Cappy is, like, he doesn't have a king, he doesn't have kings, and as the tree better, we have all of that.
Yeah, but he does have ace queen, he does have ace jack.
Anyhow, here we are, what kind of size would you go for here, and why?
What kinda, uh. Well, out of position, I would actually check here.
So, uh, in general, if you want the easy trick, okay? Whenever you take a flop as the tree better. In general, like, if you look at the strategy here, this, these, this represents all the possible flop in the game, and. Like, the callers are betting. So if you start off the base that you should be betting most of the time, you'll be a lot closer to GTO. So it's always gonna be a bet here, you tree bet, and then you follow up with the C bet every time. Try, try that out in your games, whenever you tree bet, you see that the flop.
And when Louis. Let me, let me just, uh, verify, so. What was the, the action? I guess it prefilled, so we, we raised, right?
We three bet.
Okay, okay, alright.
We'll make it eight point six, and then he calls a three bet.
Okay.
And when Louis says, all the callers are betting, he doesn't mean that all the callers are betting, he means all the colors are betting. Thanks, Scotty. You're welcome.
I mean, I ain't gonna lie, I would check this flop a lot, too, I know we're not doing it, but I still find check here.
This is a spot where we need to size up.
I don't think checking's a low EV option, by the way, I don't think it's a low EV option, but. Um, if you're playing from a range perspective, this board benefits heavily from a large bet.
It's always like. It's that pattern we see over and over, we have done.
It does, yup.
I've done that, so we're just gonna be stuck here, that's why we tree bet, because it's easier to do, we just bet big, no? I had a good plan coming for turning river and everything.
These are, uh, these are my favorite moments in the study session, right? Like, when, when you or I or someone else goes on one of these long monologues, justifying their, their rationale.
And you click the button, and it's like, no, get out of here.
It's still my favorite.
Yeah. Alright, so we need to check.
Not just a bet small, but a check, oh, so good.
Alright, Al, alright, so the score is Louis one, Al one, let's see who gets the knockout punch in the third round.
Um, from here, I would, I would go ahead and lead out, just because he, uh, checked the flop, the flop as well. Um, I don't think.
How big, Al?
Uh, I would go four point eight.
I'm checking again.
Checking.
I, I was gonna say, I support leading out, just because he shouldn't be checking back a ton of king X other than his weakest.
But he's gonna have some, right? That's, that's.
He should have some if he's balanced, he definitely should have some, like, he's gonna have king, seven, nine, six sometimes.
My theory is, when we check, we don't check a lot in these spots, but when we check second pair, and we actually have the ace over, we have a very, we're top of range here with our best queen, like, I think. Uh, when we do play a check strategy on the flop. Uh, when we do play a check strategy on the flop, and they check back, I think the motion is to o- often just check second pair again.
What's our percent of check with one W? T F H, help me out, Vivian, on the flop, what's our check percentage on the flop? Um, I think globally, it was pretty high, actually.
Seventy percent on the flop.
Yeah, there, it was globally, it was pretty high, there was quite a bit, it's right in that, like. That valley of check.
The valley of checks.
So, yeah, I think heuristically here, betting is not wrong, it's very competitive EV wise. I think the mistakes start coming in if you start large betting this versus a balanced player. All right, so we'll call, we'll call round two a draw, because you both were right. So.
Yeah, I would, I would just, uh. Bet small here. Three or?
Okay.
Three, I would bet three here.
I think three is too small. I was gonna go ten personally.
Yeah, me too, I like ten. Then a nut folding. Does he have a? Oh, we got him. We got him, finally won a hand against a solver, and I think we're gonna wrap it up on that. Thanks a lot for watching, everybody, and make sure to subscribe if you're watching on YouTube. And make sure to join our Discord, join our community, get together, get studying, let's go.